Or public comment, is there anyone who would like to make public comment on agenda items today? Seeing none, we'll move on to directors and guests. I believe we're still waiting on Mr. Scott, so we will flip flop the order here and go with the diversity essay contest winners first. I believe the first age group is Commissioner Priest, so I'll hand it over to him.
Thank you. I'm going to actually defer the opening comments to Commissioner Hartwick, as he has spent a lot of time over the years, and he was one of the individuals who enabled us to have the cultural celebration essay contest to give a few words prior to me starting off with the youngest age group commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest, and good morning, everyone. Everybody looks wonderful out here this morning on a Wednesday morning, and welcome to Dolphin County's Board of Commissioners meeting. I know this is one of the times of the year that I really look forward to, and I know that it has such a deep history and rich meaning to me personally, but also I think in reading these essays, at least in my category today, this is powerful. I mean, how powerful to be able to talk about future leaders and ways that they view the world, some of the challenges, barriers, opportunities, real issues in which they face, and providing a vision from a perspective that is going to be our future. You know, sometimes as adults, my kids remind me all the time that I'm not as cool as I think I am. And their perspectives are going to be ultimately what is going to be the perspectives that are going to hopefully make improvements in the world as we move forward. In their experiences in life, they have a very unique perspective and are able to communicate it effectively through a written word that is, at least this morning, as I've read through some of these essays, impacted me deeply indirectly. And I think when we started this whole idea of a cultural diversity movement in Dolphin County, we talked about getting to know the people that you work next to, getting to know the people that we serve, trying to make an attempt to be more reflective of the communities that we serve. Our own experiences guide sort of how we respond, and unless we have sort of understand those cultural experiences, our perceptions versus someone else's perceptions about what's normal or what you've experienced may be different from person to person, race to race, community to community. And that's why if we are going to serve the community in the appropriate way, we must understand the people that we serve, we must understand the people that we work with, and we must also gain the respect that there's always a whole lot more to learn. And an attempt to learn from our young people as a part of our whole cultural event activities, we thought it would be great to hear a couple selected questions and judges that are part of this, sort of their perspective on a couple of issues. And I think each level and grade level received a question, and they were asked to submit an essay based upon that. Those essays were then evaluated by a bunch of high-paid judges. No, the judges were not paid. We obviously recruited individuals who we have great respect from this community, who gave of their time, their talents, and their efforts to be able to evaluate them, and they brought forward the winners today who will be not only recognized and acknowledged by the Board of Commissioners, but also be rewarded with some cold hard cash for their endeavors and hopefully be placed towards the future of their college and their education and the things that they may need and value at this current stage within their life. So we're grateful that despite the negativity that we hear in the news and the people that want to have us pointing fingers and wanting to tear each other apart, I believe that narrative doesn't exist when I meet people in the larger scale. I think people are genuinely good, they want to look out for the best interests of each other, and in being able to culturally foster understanding and relationships, which I think will ultimately be what God intends us to be as we serve this community in a greater way. So I want to turn it back over to Commissioner Priest to give the first category.
Before we go into that, I just want to quickly say we are live now, live stream is up. Can everybody in the room, if you're willing, give it up for IT and all the work they do in the county? Thank you all for fixing that, we appreciate it. Hand it back over to Commissioner Priest.
And I again want to thank Commissioner Hartwick for taking the lead on this idea well over a decade ago and coming to fruition and has us here today again acknowledging the outstanding individuals who we're about to meet this morning. Most of them are here, and I have the privilege of announcing the first age group, which is ages six to 10 in the 2025 cultural celebration essay contest. Commissioner Douglas at the end will give a special acknowledgement to the judges who gave of their personal time, and want to thank them for the great work that they did as well. They had a lot of tough decisions to make. The question for ages six to 10, there were two that they could have chosen from. How does your culture shape who you are? And the second was write a tribute to one community leader who's making a difference in your community. And of all the individuals who put forth essays this year, I have three in front of me who are the top three winners in the six to 10 age group category. The third place winner is not here with us today, but I'm still going to announce her name and give a brief background. It's Berkeley Bean. She's at the Fannie B. Hershey Memorial Hall, Milton Hershey School. She cannot attend today. She's a rising fourth grade student at Milton Hershey. She lives at Student Home Madison. Berkeley turned 10 over the summer. She's a good reader and a hard worker at school. Berkeley is very proud of her Irish heritage. She also enjoys playing basketball and softball. Berkeley likes having pet dogs and loves spending time with her family. And she was the third place winner, and she will get not only a certificate of outstanding achievement, but she also gets her third place $50. So she has a $50 award. Which brings us to the final two, and both of these individuals are incredible young ladies, and I'm going to start off by calling up the second place winner from Paxtonia Elementary. I'm going to ask that she come up with either her school representative or a family member. Come on up and have a seat, and that is Vidica Berman from Paxtonia Elementary. Come on up. Good morning, Vidica, how are you? Very good. Vidica is a happy and fun-loving kid. She has turned 11 this summer, is moving into the sixth grade from Paxtonia Elementary School to Central Dolphin Middle School. She loves reading books, she's fond of writing stories, and has won a couple of prizes in the Scholastic Writing Contest and the Young Writers USA Story Writing Contest. She's also been the runner-up in the Script Spelling Bee Contest at the state level. She won the Math 24 Championship this year at the elementary level. She loves traveling and visiting different places with her family and enjoys playing violin in her free time. And she loves eating pizza. Who doesn't? Who doesn't? We have something in common, the three of us with you. So Vidica, who's here with you today?
This is Mrs. Wagner, and she's the gifted teacher at my school. She introduced this conference to me, so I could take part in it, and I really enjoy.
Great, great. And I know the folks in the Central Dolphin School District are very, very happy and proud of you for this accomplishment. Can you tell us about the essay that you wrote and what that means to you?
This essay is all about where I come from and all of the traditions and the different things that we do that make us who we are, and that's really different from the other cultures that are around the world and how even though this is diverse, it also makes us together because these different things are all fit together like puzzle pieces to make a good community.
Very nice. Well, let's hear it. And you'll notice with these kids today how remarkable they are. I mean, she literally just espoused all that without it being written down in front of her, and even at this age, I have to read off a sheet of paper in front of me. So impressive. And can you tell us what this means for the Central Dolphin School District, having a young outstanding scholar coming up through the system?
Shows us on questions.
Yep. If it's a green light, you're on.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I know, I just met Vidica a few months ago, I just came into that position, and she truly is an amazing student. I know that Paxtonia Elementary School is extremely proud of her, and she's getting ready to go to the middle school, and I know the middle school gifted support teacher is excited to get her back, she had had her previously. I mean, she's really going to shape the future, just her inclusiveness of everybody that she works with. She taught me a lot, and I've been in education for a very long time, just very humbling.
Okay, so Vidica, you are going to receive a certificate of outstanding achievement today, signed by the three Dolphin County Commissioners, and for second place, Vidica gets $65.
Congratulations. And are we going to get photos now or afterwards?
And if I may, there are several members of the public who are standing in the back, and I would kindly ask that any staff members on our team, if you're sitting in a chair, please make room for members of the public. Thank you.
All right, at this time, the moment you've all been waiting for. The winner in the six to 10 age group category, Commissioners, can I get a drum roll, please? This year's winner from Milton Hershey School Memorial Hall, and I will tell you before I even say the name, that I did reach out to President Pete Gert, as well as other outstanding alumni, Bob Gert and John Foley, and advised them that two of the three winners just in the six to 10 age group are Milton Hershey School students, and you're going to find out that we have other Milton Hershey School students in the other two age groups, which I know Ruby will enjoy this, because several years ago, we were talking with the Act So folks, and we met with Pete Gert, the folks in Milton Hershey School, and they were challenged to participate in the Act So process, and Milton Hershey has dominated that as well. So it's great to see Milton Hershey School being involved, and the other school districts too are doing very well, but that certainly has ramped up the competition and made it a lot more challenging, and Milton Hershey continues to really kick butt academically, and we're very impressed with them. And I think it's fitting also that the three of us were just yesterday represented the Katherine Hershey School grand opening, the third one, which is located in Middletown, which is an incredible acknowledgement of Milton and Katherine Hershey and their legacy, which is now three facilities in Dolphin County, kids aged six weeks to five years of age, 80 full-time family sustaining jobs, 150 kids at each location, truly a life-changing opportunity for those individuals. So I think it's fitting that I threw that in there. Okay, the winner in the six to 10 age category, let's call her up right now, Virginia Lee. Virginia, come on up. Oh, okay. Well, let me read, because it's here, it's here in color, so I thought she was present. Okay. Virginia just turned 10 years old in July, and I was going to wish her a belated happy birthday, and she's a rising fifth grade student at Milton Hershey School. She enrolled at Milton Hershey School prior to the start of her fourth grade year. In her first year at Milton Hershey School, Virginia has excelled in our school's art club and helped design the cover to our school's yearbook. She also participated in our Kids News Network, which is our student reporters who provide our daily screencast video on exciting announcements for our school building each day. She's a talented writer who will continue to shine artistically and academically as she continues her journey into middle school next year. Let's hear it for Virginia. And at this time, if we could get Vidica up here for a photo? Vidica and the representative?
All right, thank you, Commissioner Priest. I have ages 11 through 14. The question that they had the option to answer for 11 and 14-year-olds was describe how you can personally promote diversity in your school and/or community, or if you were to travel to another country, which country would you travel to and why? What are some diverse characteristics about this country? So I'm going to announce the same as Commissioner Priest did, third through first. So in third place, I'm going to request to come up with score, representative or family member, Stella Wagner. Give it up. Stella is an incredibly talented young lady, and the short time we have known her, we have seen such amazing growth. This is, I believe, a biography written by someone on your behalf. She is funny, bright, and a joy to know. She puts in hard work for the things she loves, which includes but is not limited to band, art, and writing. She has shown us leadership skills and the ability to learn and understand those around her. Even though she is young, she faces difficulty with an open heart and patience beyond her age. She has willingness to listen and learn from her mistakes to become and do better. Congratulations on third place in this contest. Who are you here with today?
I'm here with my great-grandma, well, at the podium, my great-grandma, and then my grandpa and my great-grandfather.
That's great, that's great. Well, Stella, tell us about the essay you wrote and why you wrote it and what it means to you.
The essay I wrote was about how we can promote cultural diversity in my school and our community, and I wrote about how we can try and not be ignorant to how other people grew up and how they were raised and their cultural background, and like how we can support people who want to learn more without like restricting them to their full like possibilities.
That's great, very, very good, very, very good. So for third place, you're going to get a same as you saw, certificate. I will come down and hand that to you in a moment. And for third place in the 11 to 14 category, $65.
Congratulations.
We're going to have you back up in a minute for a picture, okay? Congratulations.
Commissioner, if I may add, Commissioner Hartwick and I are know the great-grandparents very, very well. When you said funny, bright, and a joy to know, I think that categorizes funny, the grandpa, bright and a joy to know, certainly the great-grandmother. And it's Dan Mosel, who I think you can't miss him here with his patriotic outfit, one of the finest individuals I have ever met, and appreciate you being here. He comes here sometimes just to witness our meetings and represent Lower Paxton Township. So it's good to see you. Congratulations.
That's great. Next up, in our second place spot, we have Darian Akash Gangadeen. Darian, do you have a school representative coming up with you or anybody? Okay, that's fine. Darian is a 12-year-old. He is starting his eighth grade year at Milton Hershey School. He enrolled at MHS in August of 2023 as a sixth grader. He enjoys writing, playing board games, card games with others. He is always first to lend a helping hand when there is someone in need. Darian is in the band and plays flute. He excels in academics, and when others are struggling academically, he is willing to help tutor them. Darian was inducted into the Junior Spartan Chapter of National Junior Honor Society in 2023-2024 school year. Congratulations. Thank you for being here with us today. Give it up. Darian, take a moment to tell us about the essay that you wrote.
So the essay I wrote was about how at MHS, I was one of the only Indo-Caribbean kids when I first enrolled, and how I was helping to make a difference spreading my culture and information about it to help expand people's like their mind on different regions around the world.
That's awesome. Thank you for that, and you are the second place winner, and the second place winner gets, and I just want to emphasize this, a real cool certificate signed by all three Commissioners, because that's what you want the most. But then it's got this like, then it's got this $80 in there, it's not as big of a deal, but I'm going to come shake your hand, all right? All right, and finally, we have our first place winner in the 11 to 14 age group, Tiara Pickett Long. Just for everyone to know, I believe Milton Hershey School had a sweep, third, second, and first in this category. Tiara, and it is Tiara, right? I said that correctly? Tiara is a 13-year-old aspiring writer from Greensburg, Pennsylvania, who is jumping into eighth grade at Milton Hershey School. She enrolled at Milton Hershey School in January of 2023 as a fifth grader. She enjoys writing, drawing, and sports. She's, she plays both field hockey and soccer at Milton Hershey School while still excelling at academics. She was inducted into the Junior Spartan Chapter of National Junior Honor Society this past school year. Congratulations. Tiara also volunteered with the REV's All-Star Assisting Kids with Disabilities learning to learn how to play field hockey. How great is that? Give it up for Tiara. Tiara, who's here with you today?
My grandma.
Your grandma? You must be very proud. Do you want to share a little bit about your essay and what it meant to you and what it was maybe about?
I wrote about how we can include diversity in our school and our community every day, and that means to me how we have like a lot of different diversity in all of our students and how we can like celebrate that and include that in every day.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so much for participating in this, and congratulations on being the top essay in all the 11 and 14-year-olds that we received. And the top essay gets, again, a really cool, and it's in a great folder, it has the seal of the county on it. That's, that's the thing you really want. And then, I don't, you don't want this envelope, though. I can hold on to this? No, $100 for the number one. I just want to close out the 11 to 14 and by just saying about the entire essay contest and all the winners from six to 18, how I think a program like this really allows us as Commissioners to influence students across Dolphin County to consider the value of diversity, to take some time to reflect on the ways in which they can champion it, but certainly the ways in which they can consider the importance of it. And for many of them, maybe they haven't even taken a moment to consider the diversity right in their midst. I can tell you even as a Commissioner now, prior to being a Commissioner, I did not realize the thriving Bhutanese Nepali community in our region. I knew it existed, but I didn't know the extent to which it existed. And so there's so much for all of us to learn, but I think as a six-year-old when I, or an 18-year-old, when I get the opportunity to write an essay to express the ways in which I want to impact diversity in my own community, or the ways in which I want to acknowledge it, that's the type of thing that sets someone on a course of life of being willing to look into that, being willing to consider the ways in which diversity can impact our communities. And so I'm really thankful for this program and thankful that the county is doing this to continue to promote diversity across the county. With that, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Hartwick for ages 15 through 18.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. First of all, while I have great respect for the Milton Hershey School, the utmost respect, I am proud to say that none of my recipients are from Milton Hershey. But we do have, however, the first individual that was up, and before I even get into the recognition, I read all three of these essays, and I'm moved. I mean, like the passion, and if you're going to allow me the indulgence, I'd like to read the number one essay today. I think it was, even from my perspective, diversity means a lot of things to a lot of people. I mean, you know, I had a physical disability when I was young, heard a young lady here helping individuals who had handicap issues in field hockey. I mean, that's, that's diversity. We talk about, you know, age ranges, and here, there was an essay about the caste system and what that means to somebody's trauma and perspectives, and what that means related to their possibilities within their own life, life and their lot of life. And all of those things have a unique perspective as we serve others and understand sort of their trauma, their experiences, and what they've been through, and how we can best figure out a way to support them and get them to a position of healing. So this was moving for me this morning, and I'm just grateful to the Cultural Diversity Committee, first of all, the people that do this job, that come together. I see we've got Fay here, I see we've got Ruby, Helen, we've got a number of our folks. Let's give our employees who make up our cultural diversity. And then we have a big event, just so you all know, if you haven't heard, we've got the cultural celebration coming up August 16th. We've got a tribute to Frankie Beverly with his band, Baze, that is going to be here performing all of the hits. And we also have three incredible soulful singers from my era, Kiki Wyatt, we've got the Evelyn Champagne King, and so we also got Los Monstros, got a great lineup of services for everyone. So this is about community coming together. It's not just a one-time conversation. I think serving people and meeting them where they're at in a situation where it's not about you coming in seeking mental health help or drug and alcohol help or, you know, having to come to an institution and system, we should be doing our part in reaching people in a way that doesn't put you in a very negative position from the time to be able to connect with the people that can provide you services. So all of us are struggling, all of us need some kind of support and ways to connect you with that support the county government gives, and going it through, understanding that we're all different, and that tapestry makes this county, quite frankly, a strengthened county that, in my opinion, is the reason that we shine so brightly all the time. So with that, I'd like to provide, the third place award winner is from Commissioner Priest's High School, a proud Hershey alum. But the third place winner is Arman Kazie. Is Arman with us today? Arman? Actually, I think Arman may even be online, so if we don't have commitment, I have a little note here that says he may attend virtually, I just don't know if he's online with them. He does not seem, we're going to read his accomplishments anyway. How's that sound? Arman is currently a 16-years-old and starting grade 11 at Hershey High School. He enjoys neuroscience and biometrical research. He participates in STEM competitions, tutors, and does community service. He recently received awards for the Science Olympiad in 2025. Capital Area Science and Engineering Fair, PA Junior Academy of Science and Media and Design Competition. It sounds like we've got a future at the Med Center right in the backyard. Uh, I I the question, by the way, that uh this age category fifteen to eighteen was asked was to explore attitudes of your community towards other ethnic groups and share your reflections on those views. Or share your understanding of current emergence emerging community cultural issues as well as the role that these might play in the assessment of your community's well-being. A little bit more, you know, in-depth, a little bit more thought process for the older age group, and we did. We were not disappointed with the response. So uh let's give Arman Kazie our third place winner. And we we will have this shiny certificate as we've uh Commissioner Douglas has expressed, along with the sixty-five dollars in cash uh for Arman.
Urs.
It's up, it's up, let me see.
It's a hundred and third place for that.
Oh, I got a hundred and third place? Got it.
Yeah. So Arman, make sure you check that envelope when you get it.
We will not stilt you. We 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 will not short you. The uh the the category is one forty for first place, one ten for second place, and a hundred for third place in the category. So uh thank you, Arman. The next uh uh winner uh in second place category is Deanna Diaz Davalos. Is are they here? She's looking for mom to come back. She's saying, you know.
And I I have to disclose a conflict of interest relating to this award, which is that her family makes the best cheese steaks in Doffin County. And you can get them at the Broad Street Market at the Cheese Steak Corner Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Hey, I like that. Be non-paid advertisement by Eric Aguirre.
I love that. And 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 small business and contributing families. So um Deanna, um obviously, if you can, tell us a little bit about your essay. I read it. It was extraordinarily incredible. I understand you're a part of the youth soccer team uh and your experiences um both related to work, uh expectations of college, uh and um, you know, sort of the experience you've had with teammates and and cultural experiences uh were were certainly eye-opening. Could you share with us a little bit about your essay?
Yes. So um going into my freshman year of high school, we didn't have a girl soccer team. So me and a couple of girls joined the boy soccer team. There was a lot of diversity in that team. And then when we went against other schools, there's not that much diversity there, so we would get faces and whatnot. But those kids on our soccer team, they just worry about playing and working, but not really looking forward um towards their education. But there is not enough teachers or staff for the and give those resources to them, which kind of sucks because Harrisburg is, there's a lot of diversity here. And for there not to be enough resources for our students and whatnot, that's kind of a shame.
Well, it sounds like we have a passionate future education leader that has experience and a passion to ensure that those resources are available to other kids that are in your situation. So I want to thank you for your passion. Thank you for your excellent writing, and it came across in your essay. And the second place winner is from Harrisburg High School SciTech High, Deanna Diaz Davalos. And I do have to write money for you. Okay, for for soccer?
Yes.
That's awesome. Yeah, she's gonna have to head out. She has to be.
Can we get a photo with her quick? Congratulations. And then we'll post it on the cheesecake web or cheesesteak website.
And the number one uh first place finisher in the age fifteen to eighteen age group is uh from Doffin County Technical School, Shanti Subadi. Shanti? Shanti, I I was uh extremely impressed by your essay. And if you don't mind, if the folks would indulge me to be able to read her essay.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's going to be uh short, but I want to make sure that uh we actually have the essay. I had it right here in front of me. Yep, there we go. It's called Beyond the Line. What if I told you in some cultures, a last name isn't just a name, it's a label, it's a judgment, and sometimes a sentence? Growing up in Wuhan Nepali family, my family is deeply influenced by the Nepali caste system. The idea of discrimination based upon one's caste is a part of our culture. What's their last name? It's a question I've heard in my entire life. Anytime I mentioned someone new, my mom would ask, are they bond? Or what is their last name? Circling the idea that the caste determines a person's worth and importance. The caste system is rooted in ancient Hindu society, made to organize roles, but evolved into a rigid hierarchy based upon birth, not merit, where people were judged by their caste, not their character. At the top of the bond or the Brahmins, followed by Chhetri, Matwali, and lastly, so-called Untouchables Kami. The caste system gave power to higher castes while denying lower caste's basic respect. Back in Nepal, my great-grandfather walked through the crowded refugee camps of Nepal. When Kami got glanced in this direction, my great-grandfather slapped him and shouted at him, look away. But then Kami's houses were even built to face away from other homes as if their presence needed to be hidden. Hearing this story, I was stunned. How could a simple glance cause such violence? Over time, I realized the caste system wasn't just about tradition, it was a system that taught people to fear and reject others. Although the Nepali government has made caste-based discrimination illegal, people still follow it to this day. Many continue to refuse to interact with the lower castes and seem it seem even fa- some even face social exclusion or violence. The law may have changed, but society's mindset in many cases is not. As a child, I was pressured to marry a bond because that was what my family expected of me. Marrying outside of my caste was unthinkable and forbidden. Even today, if someone marries outside their caste, their family might never talk to them again or even disown them. Many families would rather have their kids marry bond, who is an abuser and doesn't treat them right, than have them marry a Kami who is willing to treat them with love and respect. They are treated as if they no longer exist simply for choosing love over tradition. A person's worth and importance can not be determined on their caste, so why hold it against them? We need to create an environment where everyone is treated with equal respect by breaking these negative cycles of discrimination repeated throughout history, building a future where everyone is treated equally. We need to remove these outdated beliefs from past generations and build a future where caste does not divide us and everyone is valued for who they truly are and what they bring to the table. Because in the end, what matters isn't the caste we're born into, it's the life we choose to live. You really moved me. Obviously, um could you uh expound on uh your essay? It was extraordinarily powerful and educated a lot of us in this room, and I'm sure will be a powerful education tool for for folks who are watching online.
Um, many people believe that um like their culture is just something that they grow up with, but to me, it's something that shaped my background and who I am today. I know that like it was really hard for me to write this essay, but.
Well, we we are here with you. We are so proud of you, and you are an incredibly blessed and beautiful young lady, and you are our number one essay winner. Thank you for the strike.
I think we can all agree with uh the kids we saw here, uh the future leaders, the future of this great nation is in very good hands. Uh, a lot of talent coming up through the system here in Doffin County, and the three of us are very proud of of what we've seen today. And again, so thankful for the judges for the time that they gave uh for this process. Speaking of the judges, I would like to honor the judges with the certificate as well. I'm going to give my colleagues some to share as well. There you are. Those um I'm gonna we'll begin with the ones that are in person, or at least we expected them to be in person. And if they're here, they can come up to the dais and uh maybe we could give them a round of applause. These are, just to be clear, these are the judges who um, you know, gave volunteered their time to this process to read and review all of these essays and um and rank uh these uh incredible uh young students. Uh, first up, Charlotte Plains. Give it up for Charlotte. I have Dr. uh Ebony Vasquez.
And they've got two tickets to the Jazz Festival that's coming up as well.
Uh, next up, Ruby Dodd. Uh, Norleen Duncan. Hey, I saw Norleen right there.
How about Athena? Jerida?
Alex, I'll take it.
Okay, got it. And then, got it.
And I think you've got some that we uh I think Commissioner Priest has some that we know are not here, uh but we just still want to honor them by reading their name. I think all three of them are not in person. You aren't the official recipient, but thank you for getting that. Yolimar Marquez, not here. Anna Cordova. And last but not least, Jessica Diaz is here. Thanks to all of our judges for their uh time and effort um in ensuring that this uh program uh continues to have the impact uh that we've been able to witness here today. Uh, we will go um back up to A under directors and guests and uh invite Gabe Scott, the uh oh, should we get a picture with the judges? I'm being told. Alright, let's get a picture with the judges. Sorry, my apologies. Gabe, we promise you, you're next.
Yes.
This is Arman Kazie.
Yep, the Derek County.
Alright, we now have the twenty twenty-five state champion of the hundred-meter dash, Gabe Scott. We're gonna ask that he comes on up. He brings up whoever he would like to as well. Come on up, Gabe. I'm gonna hand it over to Commissioner Hartwood because I believe he has uh a uh certificate of recognition for you and uh probably wants to share some.
You want to go ahead and take a seat? He's always moving. You you can't win uh the types of races you have, Gabe, without continuing to move. And and today really brings me uh even added uh honor and pleasure. I've known this young man since, probably been about five or six years old. Um, designing plays for him on the football field that would give him just about this much daylight. And we knew if he had this much daylight, everybody else would see the back of his jersey and the back of his heels because he was by far the fastest kid on every field that we played on. Uh, and not only was he an incredibly talented and gifted young athlete, and that you don't have to go far to understand that his his roots run deep, uh both in track stars, uh with parents, uh mother who attended uh and and was a Division One track athlete and who I've heard about uh when I was uh young and she was a uh somebody who had great accolades and championships and uh but um this young man has been somebody that has been a model human being. Um, you know, beyond what we do on the athletic field, uh it's how you represent yourself as a leader uh in all levels. And one of the things I know about Tamika is that Gabe being a strong young man who had the right principles and values, uh you you two didn't always agree. Your your mom wasn't trying to be your best friend. Uh, your mom was trying to be somebody who helped guide you and helped put you on the right path and allow you to recognize the full potential that's within you. And I I want to give you some credit, Tamika, uh for for not always saying yes, not always, you know, uh being there to um uh to coddle and 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 to push Gabe. And I know he appreciates that. The older that he gets, um he has just been a naturally gifted, um he he's got a a a light in him that God has placed in him that is shines in every aspect, whether it's on the track, uh uh whether it's on in this classroom, whether it's in leadership roles, whether it is in the community, whether it is in front of the public. I mean, this young man, we are going to be seeing, and I I got, you know, vibes of Olympic feeling and you know, uh this region being represented. The one thing about this county, it it is the county of champions. And uh we might struggle a lot. There may be a lot of things that are against people that we point out in this region, but I will tell you, that pressure creates diamonds. And the ability for us to be able to have another potential rare individual that's in our midst, that has the potential to do some great things, to bring additional pride and recognition back to this region are the things that we need to be celebrating in the news. We always hear the bad stuff, right? This morning, we've seen some great things coming from young people that are thinking well beyond the stuff that they're being fed or called. Uh, they're actually being called to a higher belief, a higher purpose. And uh we are honored as a board of commissioners to be able to recognize that higher purpose and give you accolades and your honor. And also say that with, you know, this kind of honor comes a lot of responsibility, right? Uh, the idea that folks are going to be, you know, looking at you, younger track stars, younger classmates, other people that aspire to go in your roots to say, how how did Gabe do it? You know, I I know he was on the national track stage. I know you've set records. I know you now won state golds, state silvers, back-to-back years. Uh, you've got national gold medals. I mean, uh how how did Gabe do it? And then and then how did Gabe prepare himself for the next level? How how did Gabe treat his classmates? How did Gabe treat the other people on the 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 uh track? You know, ultimately, was he a great teammate? How did he lift others up? All of those things I will say to you, young man, you get an A plus on. You hear me? You you are a phenomenal young man, somebody who I am proud and blessed to have seen grow. And uh we are proud from a board of commissioners' perspective to honor both your state track uh championship this year and the hundred meter. You're the fastest man in Pennsylvania. You're a bad boy. You hear me? You are a bad young man. And 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 not too many people can say they won the most difficult fast race in fast race in the state of Pennsylvania. They can't take that from you ever, Gabe. And I think the foundation that you have created to have future greatness, we are all on the edges of our seats, waiting to see how that all turns out. Because we know you've got it in you. We know you have a spirit in you. And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, on this sixth day of August 2025, in recognition of your outstanding performance and unwavering dedication, Gabe Scott has demonstrated hard work and commitment and has successfully reached this important milestone and achievement in the Triple A Boys 100 meter dash as a gold medal and champion. Your speed, perseverance, and sportsmanship have brought great pride to your team, this school, and this county. This achievement reflects not only your athletic talent, but also your hard work and commitment to excellence at all levels. Gabe, congratulations, champion. We're proud of you.
Mickey, you trying to get out of here without saying anything?
We gotta get a picture. We gotta get a picture. We want to hear from your mom. I gave you accolades. Come on up there now.
You go to the Marley's?
Sure. And do you want to say anything about the?
Let's get a picture.
I'm more proud, I am, I'm more proud of 4.0.
What was his time, George?
His time this year, 10.43.
So that's about 4.5 seconds faster than, I think any of the three of us are going to run that.
I think his fastest was 10.33.
Awesome. I don't know if I could run it 14, 15.
I run it 20.
Okay, there we go.
Sounds like a good fundraiser. We should all do that for a cause. Should all get out on, you know, blowing Achilles for a cause.
That's one I will skip.
All right, neither one of us could be any more eloquent than Commissioner Hartwick was, as usual. But truly, young man, you are a role model in your community, looked up to by not just fellow students at your school district, but also throughout Dolphin County and the region and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. You've done great things, but a lot more is going to come your way. And we're fully supportive of you and be looking forward to reading about you in the paper and watching you on the news in the coming years. So, great job. Keep up the great work.
Yeah, Gabe, we're incredibly proud. So keep representing Dolphin County as you continue to rise. All right, next up, we have Human Resources, Cassie Ruschinski.
Good morning.
Good morning. There are no items that need voted on today for salary board or personnel.
Any questions of Cassie? Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Director of Budget and Finance, Victoria Warren. Good morning. Morning, Victoria.
So there are no changes to the purchase order packet. It'll be ready for your vote and approval next week. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do not assume anyone else has any questions.
Just everything contained within the budget packet is within the 2025 budgeted numbers.
I'm not aware of any budgetary issues with items in the packet.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Next up, we have our Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are only two items on the agenda this week requiring board action. First, appointing Commissioner Hartwick to the South Central Elio Workforce Development Area Board, consistent with recent changes in Commissioner oversights. And second, an additional one-month extension for Prime Care's existing healthcare services at the Dolphin County Prison. As a refresher, we are currently operating in a two-month extension agreement which expires at the end of August. This additional one-month extension would run through the end of September and allow for the time necessary to ensure a smooth transition to Medico, the new provider the board selected last week. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Solicitor's Report. Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Commissioner. The two items mentioned by the Chief Clerk have been reviewed and approved for board action by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have the training packet here before us. We have two items on the training packet for approval, I believe. We have two items. Do I have a motion for the training packet? No move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to our matters requiring board action. As already previously stated, we have two items before us. Do I have a motion for the two items?
I'll make a motion to approve items one and two.
Second. Commissioner Priest made a motion to approve items one and two, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? I would like to just thank Prime Care for agreeing to a 30-day extension for the purposes of smooth transition. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Former business? No former business before us today. We'll move on to Commissioner's comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Hartwick.
I'm going to try to keep it short. I know this is a long meeting. Just a really good update from past Friday in DC with bringing the idea of meeting with the Senator McCormick and Fetterman and obviously the administration to continue to keep this issue of keeping steel in Steelton. We had a bipartisan coalition that continues to work tirelessly to make sure that those steel jobs are not compromised. We are not going away. We are going to continue to rattle cages and give credit to everyone who is willing to ensure that the future of steel remains in Steelton. I'll keep it that simple. This is not a partisan issue. It's one that is about jobs and keeping a legacy in our community, and we are not backing away. Second, I want to give credit to all of the great events that happened in Dolphin County this weekend. It was a great weekend for Harrisburg. I mean, you know, it relates to the feeling, the vibe. I mean, it felt like, actually, when I was growing up again up in Reservoir Park, the amount of people that were in Reservoir Park, the Chris Franklin's event, the concert series, the number of acts that were in this region. For the folks that are saying there's not really a whole lot to do in Harrisburg, they obviously weren't here in Harrisburg and Dolphin County this weekend. So I want to thanks to all the organizers. I don't know too many people that have a better heart in this community. What I find is if you're doing things in the right reason, with the right heart, for the best interest of the community, our community shows up in ways that those opportunities are taken advantage of. I want to thank the community and the great people like Chris Franklin who put on these weekend events. Great work, Harrisburg.
Commissioner Priest?
Yes, I just want to add on and say that last evening was National Night Out and all three of us were at various locations throughout the evening. I know Christian Douglas was in Harrisburg and Hummels Town, I believe. I had an opportunity to run into Commissioner Hartwick at a couple of locations last night, Lower Paxton, Swetera, Hummels Town. Also saw Mary Bateman, our county comptroller, Matt Krupp, our prethontary, our district attorney, Franchardo, and our quarter of deeds, Jim Zugay, at several locations. I had an opportunity to go to Lower Paxton, which was packed as usual and well-run, then Swetera Township, and went to Lower Swetera Township, Fire Hall, then to High Spire. Commissioner Hartwick, folks were giving you their best there. And finished up at Hummels Town, and it was great seeing the mayor there. And I know both my colleagues were at Hummels Town at the same time. So it was a great night and opportunity for us to get out and about. Law enforcement was at each location, the sheriff, police officers, our fire departments, our emergency responders, those individuals who are there for us 24/7, 365, able and ready to respond at a moment's notice when we're at our time of greatest need. And it's great seeing them at each location, as well as all the community members that came out. There are thousands of people throughout Dolphin County who were out last night celebrating. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say last night I had an opportunity to begin in Harrisburg at Strawberry Square for National Night Out, and then to Swetera, and then to Hummels Town, and an amazing night. And if you didn't get a chance to participate, Dairy Township is tonight, I believe, correct? Due to the concert, they moved it a day. And so definitely an opportunity to honor our first responders and thank them for their service in the community. Commissioner Hartwick referenced this weekend and the great things that were going on this weekend. It really was a lot this weekend. In my time as a commissioner, I think this was one of my busiest calendar weekends. And I know that to be true because my wife was in Portland and I was in charge of three kids while also running around to a bunch of things. But I did get to go to the Head and the Heart concert on Saturday night and the Marley's concert on Sunday night. And I just want to say, you know, when these concerts were in jeopardy, we stepped in the commissioners to ensure that they continued. One of the things that was brought from the community was, in previously, some of the lack of diversity in these concerts. And I do think we struck the right balance this year. And I think as we continue trying to, trying to continue to bring acts that reflect our community and that ultimately draw out our community is really important to me. I think the DC Live shows this year were a great success and something we can build on for even more of that vibe, not just being a weekend, but being something that happens, you know, throughout the summer, maybe even into the fall. So we want to continue to build off the success of this weekend. And I just want to thank Frank and Dave for their leadership. Those are the organizers who helped book the acts and helped put together everything to make that possible. They put a lot of energy and effort into it, and I just want to thank them for the massive impact. I mean, the early numbers I heard were that, at least at the Marley Show, I think 75% of the individuals that were there were from outside of our county. And so when we talk about economic impact, bringing people in from, you know, outside of our county, has a massive impact on, even just thinking about all those people are paying for parking. All those people are probably grabbing food or grabbing, you know, beverage somewhere. Like, this is the type of impact that we know supports small businesses and revitalizes a community. And so we want to continue to see that thrive. Also, over the weekend, we had the Big 26 game. If you're not familiar with the Big 26 game, it's a baseball game between Pennsylvania and Maryland. It's All-Stars from Pennsylvania, All-Stars from Maryland. They play Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Senators Stadium at MB Field. And they play a game each day. And what kicks off that is the Thursday Buddy Game. Each athlete is paired with a special needs student, and they play a game of baseball with that student. And it was going to rain on Thursday, and so they moved it. I just want to thank the Farm Show for being open. The Farm Show made their space available so that they could play an indoor wiffle ball game and have their picnic there. And special thanks to the Farm Show for making that possible, and I got to witness that. Also, yesterday, or two days, sorry, two days ago, I had the opportunity to go to, at the invitation of the Bhutanese community of Harrisburg. They invited me to a Hindu celebration that was taking place here in Dolphin County, a five-day celebration that I got to be a part of. And I just want to thank them for including me. And then finally, yesterday, I'm continuing kind of like this opportunity to be out in the community with coffee with the commissioner. Basically, you can come, we can, you know, sit down over coffee and chat. Sometimes it's me and a couple people. Sometimes, at one point, I think it was a dozen people at Soda Jerk that showed up. So we're continuing that. It was at Capital Diner. I just want to thank Capital Diner for being open and kind of pushing some tables together for us so that we could gather together and have a chat. And on August 12th, I'll be at St. Thomas Roasters in Lingelstown. And on August 26th, I'll be at Little Amp's at Green Street. And that's from 8:00 AM to 9:30. So just want to be in the community, be accessible. So if either of those dates work for you, come join me and let's grab a cup of coffee together. That's the extent of my Commissioner comments. For correspondence, we have no correspondence today. Oh, Commissioner Priest.
Yeah, I just want to, I have to comment. I did see a video of you throwing out the first pitch at one of the games. I think you did it multiple times. I've done that in past years. And I will give you credit. In the past, I have stood below the actual mound. But last year when I did, I stood on the rubber. And I was also given cat calls by the individuals as I'm walking up there, like, there's no way you're going to make it. I think, who was saying, was it the home team or the away team that was razzing you?
The Pennsylvania coaches were chirping a little bit. They were, they were like, they were, yeah.
I do have to tell you, they never chirped at me, but I did get chirped at by the Maryland players and coaches.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, so it felt good.
It was all, it was all good. We had hung out on Thursday and they dared me to throw off the rubber. And I said, I can do it.
And you did.
And no warm-up. That's the other thing. They don't tell you this when you've never thrown out a first pitch before, but there's no warm-up. I'm out there trying to like, stretch, get ready. 41 years old, I can't be thrown out.
Admittedly, last year when I did it, I was down at Memorial Field for about an hour before.
Oh, you were throwing darts before.
Absolutely. I had to warm up.
To bring my mitt.
At my age, you need a lot more warm.
All right. Well, yeah, good times. All right, I'm going to, we're opening up for public participation now. Just a reminder, it's a three-minute time limit. We have one individual who signed up ahead of time, and if anyone would like to share after, we'll be available. But I'll invite Gene Stilp up. Thank you, Gene.
Uh, one, thank you, Gene Stilp, this is a refelling. One event that was missed was the big demonstration on the Capitol steps this past weekend against the Trump administration. So demonstrations are an important part of our heritage. Talk about amazing events. The NRC hearing at Penn State last Thursday evening was right on track with hearings of yesteryear. The public input section was underwhelming. After the NRC presentation, the 30 folks who signed up to speak were rewarded by having an hour divided between them. Elected officials got to speak first. I'm sorry if I missed any of your presentations. I didn't see any or hear anyone from the five county area public safety departments. Fortunately, the remaining time allowed each participant to have a full two minutes of time to ask questions or give an opinion. This was far from a full-throated public meeting. The NRC Security Forces, Middletown Police were ready to pounce if someone went overtime and continued to speak. One thing became precisely clear. The NRC didn't want anything to do with emergency planning or evacuation. The five NRC leaders basically said everything was up to FEMA in regard to emergency planning. You know, the agency that Trump has decimated with his firings, and the current atmosphere across the country has led to approximately 20% of the FEMA staff loss, especially among the older and more experienced staff, according to many articles and reports. The fearless leader in DC has no idea of the impact he's having when dressing down FEMA. But then again, the local emergency staffs from the counties, they don't need FEMA. Tell me what FEMA does during a radiation emergency, seriously. Another thing crossed my path looking at FEMA, while FEMA has insurance programs related to floods, there's no insurance program from FEMA related to radiation exposure to property or land. So what we saw last Thursday was simply an exercise in box checking. The NRC officials came to town, spent one hour listening to folks, and took off. The nuclear waste specialist was a 12-year-old girl who got facts wrong from their staff. Radiation release, excuse me, radiation release opinions from NRC from the 1979 accident were not believable. No mention of the large amount of radiation monitors at that time were not even working. The radiation detected was over their design limits. No mention of the new radiation monitoring system. What was going on this time? Upriver. 80 miles upriver at the Sescuna Plant, a scram was occurring. Scram is an automatic reactor shutdown because of some problem. The later reports said no radiation was released, and there was no danger to the public. A scram is what a plant does, is what happens when a plant shuts down. When radiation is released, the real scram occurs when everybody has to scram and get out of the area quickly. So there you have it. TMA, if TMA is shut down, there is no risk. If TMA operates, you have risk. Major risk, including the ignored threat of continual low-level radiation, which has documented effects for children and their developmental years. But we will get that at a later date. So there you have it. Another step in technological tyranny, the dead zone in our county of democracy. You actually need your red team here to analyze everything and not the NRC's lately jaded staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene. Is there anyone else in the room for public comment? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. I am here representing Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Dana Lumpkin, and this is Monica Chisholm. Okay. And we're here on behalf of the Harrisburg, I'm the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And before I begin, I would like to thank you for supporting our youth symposium that we have had for the last two years. Commissioner Priest has always attended, and our program has been very successful, where we focused for the two years on human trafficking. where we focused for the two years on human trafficking and gun violence. It involved with Harrisburg Police Department participated, Dolphin County Human Trafficking participated, Homeland Security participated. So, this year, we are focusing on our third symposium, which will be on voter registration, civic engagement, and we are looking for your support again. We did apply for the tourism grant, and we were very honored to receive $1,400. And we are coming to you today, asking you if you can continue to support us because we, we reach out to at least 10 of the school districts in the Dolphin County area. Central Dolphin School District has participated, Stilton High Spire has participated, Harrisburg School District, Harrisburg High School, and Cougar Academy. We also reach out to Middletown, Susquehanna Township. For two years, we have had over 100 students participating each year. So, we are just very honored to be able to give these students the knowledge that they need. Our focus every year is to provide them with the resources that they need, the knowledge that they need to be, to better themselves and be aware of the social issues that are going, that are occurring.
Good job.
Okay. So, again, as you know, well, some of you might not know, our program is held at PAC every year. We have over 100 students participation. We also have guest speakers, workshops, and so we have to feed them. We provide them with other things to take at home, you know, to use as far as to get the knowledge. We provide them, well, last year, we provided them with alarms for their keychain. So, this year, oh, I forgot, the lieutenant governor also participated. So, that was awesome, too. So, this year, we are coming to you, asking you if you could support our program by funding us $3,500, so that we again can continue to move forward with focusing on issues within the community and engaging our young people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I've had the privilege of being there the last couple of years, and it is a packed house. Students from throughout Dolphin County are there, the speakers are fully engaged. And these ladies and their organization, sorry, they don't just talk the talk, they walk the walk. And the kids are there, they're very respectful, and they're there to learn, and they're eager to learn more. And I'm glad to see that next year's going to vote registration and civic engagement. It's good stuff.
And I also like to say that we usually have our meetings, I mean, our workshops on Wednesdays. So, we changed it to Thursday because we would love you to participate, continue with your participation, and if possibly be part of our speakers.
All right. And just a note, if you happen to have a sponsorship pack that you provide for soliciting sponsorships, please get that to the commissioners because that would be something that we can look at for this event.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing no one, all, you're taking a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.